Dr. Kenworthy.
All good.
All good.
All right, and we don't have to turn any mics on. Advantage of being in the Portsmouth High School. All right, welcome everybody to the Portsmouth School Committee meeting of Thursday, July 17. If you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for troops and arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Prior to this public session, we had an executive session. No votes were taken. May I have a motion, please, to seal the executive session minutes of July 17, 2025?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, seven zero. Please let the record reflect that everybody is present here tonight. Thank you for making a July meeting. We normally don't have them, so glad everybody could make it. And in case of emergency, there are exit doors here, there, and we meet over at the new gym. I always miss that, right? Okay, good. We, we have a couple of big items on the agenda tonight, but we also had to put a few business things on the agenda that came up, and so we'd like to get those done. First, can I have a motion, please, for Business A?
I move for discussion and action on the award for educational facility planning and architect engineering services to the construction, school construction application, stages one and two contingent on cost negotiations.
Second, for discussion, Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you. So we are following the timeline for our stage one and two development of our next five-year capital plan. So the next item up was to secure an architect and engineering firm, which will also be an education planner. Mr. Duro put together a memo with some additional backup, but essentially we sent out a request for qualifications back on June 16. We received nine proposals, which was a very good number. And an evaluation committee made up of myself, Mr. Duro, Dr. Copeland, Mr. Hamilton, the town council, Ms. Marciano, Mr. Simmons, and Ms. Marsden, the town finance director, reviewed the proposals and the scoring process. And Studio Jade was the overall winner from the firm. So we are asking for your approval of an award to Studio Jade for this architect engineering services, which also includes the educational planning. And this will be contingent on a cost negotiation, which Mr. Duro will enter into. This is similar, similar to what we did for the Onus Project Manager.
So this will come, would come back to us for the contract after negotiation.
Yes.
Any other questions? No, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, seven zero. Can I motion for Business B, please?
I move for discussion and action on a contract for athletic trainer.
Second, for discussion, Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you. So we did approve right at the end of the school year, a contract renewal for Mr. Josh King, who had been our trainer for many years. Right after that, Mr. King did inform me that he had taken another position in the district closer to home. So we did advertise and through the selection process, I'm happy to report that we found an excellent candidate, Zoe LaFeria. And tonight I am asking for your approval of the contract to secure her services, and she is eager to begin.
And summer sports or fall sports are right around the corner. You're correct. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now for our sad news of the evening. Ferber.
I move for discussion and action. I think there's a typo here. Except for accepting the resignation and waive the 90-day notice, I might add, with deep regret.
Deep regret.
Second, with deep regret.
Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you. So again, it is, it is with mixed emotions, but as you are aware, I have accepted the opportunity to be the next superintendent in the East Greenwich School District, the community where I live and my children attend school. So it is definitely, was not an easy decision, but with your approval, I would be submitting my resignation for my last day effective on August 11th, and then I would begin in East Greenwich on August 12.
Okay, well, I guess we have to. I'd like to allow the committee members to make any comments, reasons why we shouldn't, et cetera, et cetera. But I have a few things to say, but if anybody else would like to go.
I've been here for as long as you have, when you started as a little boy.
And I looked like that, yeah.
And you grew into an assistant.
Yeah.
Deputy superintendent. And then, yeah, like, right. And, and then became a super, a super superintendent. And it's been a delight working with you because it's been, I think it's been a great 10 years, really. I think we've.
Feeling it mutual.
You, and really our whole administrative team have been responsible for some great accomplishments here, educationally, you know, athletically, it's just been a great 10 years, I think.
Thank you.
I was, I was thinking about the first six months of your tenure as superintendent, when you started in February of 2020 and had an interesting first year, to say the least. And it, it, you know, you really had a trial by fire at the beginning. And over time, things have calmed down a little bit, but your, your leadership in the district has been so important to the success of the district. And through that time, I, I've enjoyed working with you very much and really appreciated the way you have led with great integrity and just a great concern and caring for everyone throughout the district, the students and the staff as well. So it's just, it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, you've led during my older son's time in the district, and I have also appreciated your stoic leadership, and I value your, your background, which I think has been really empowering for your team. You've built a solid team to feel like you can, you've built a team that you trust, and we all feel the time has come for you to step away. But that, that is amazing achievement to feel like you, you have the leadership skills to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, Portsmouth's been very fortunate to have you leading the schools. You're leaving us in a pretty good spot, very respected among the state as far as school systems go. And you've built a pretty strong leadership team that's gonna try to step up until your shoes. So our loss is gonna be East Greenwich's game. So congratulations on the new position.
We can still vote no. Good, good, all right.
I'll say something. Yeah, Tom, thanks so much for your leadership. The district is, you know, it's definitely in a better place, and I really appreciate your support. I'm new to the committee, so you've definitely helped me, as well as the rest of the committee members, get acclimated, but I really appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
All right. So, Dr. Kenworthy, I'd like to extend our heartfelt, I had to write mine down. I'd like to extend our heartfelt thanks to you for your work these past 10 years on behalf of Portsmouth children, their families, district employees, and all the stakeholders in this district. You arrived in Portsmouth in October 2014 as our new Assistant Superintendent, and over the next five years, you've worked to improve as Assistant Superintendent, teaching and learning in the district. When Superintendent Riley left somewhat unexpectedly in late December 2019, you stepped seamlessly into that superintendent's role in January 2020. And over the next five years, you would lead the district through the COVID epidemic, distance learning, return to in-person learning, a $21 million bond initiative to improve the health and safety of all of our schools, and the reshaping of the district leadership team. You have personally hired most of our district leadership team, including principals at Melville, PHS, and PMS, our special ed director, student services director, our HR director, our current facilities manager, and of course, one of your first appointments, as we learned by Zoom, Dr. Elizabeth Viveras. While navigating COVID and the bond process, and by the way, did I mention that all of our projects are being done on time and under budget, so as of, as of this moment? These are very important accomplishments. I think the most important legacy you're leaving with us is this high-performing, well-functioning leadership team. I'm getting a little choked up. It is, in my view, the reason why, while we are very sad to see you go, you have not left us in a crisis. It is a credit to your leadership and character that everyone would be happy if you stayed and is grateful for your hard work and dedication over the past 10 years. And yet, we still wish you all the very best in your next position as superintendent of your hometown, East Greenwich. As all of us who heard Dr. Kenworthy's remarks at this year's PHS graduation know, he chose to enlist in the Marines, perhaps to his mother's dismay.
That's the one floor I could never figure out.
Not a Marine. On route to completing your college education. And as many in Portsmouth with connections to the military know, once you are a Marine, you are never an ex-Marine, merely a former Marine. As a corps stays with you, and you are part of the corps. So I hope the same will be true for you with Portsmouth. You'll always be a positive part of us, and hopefully, we will be a part of you. Now, before turning it over to you for a few remarks, the formalities must be observed. As you have done for so many students and staff, we wish to recognize your accomplishment with a Portsmouth certificate.
Finally.
We will also get a plaque, if you would like a Portsmouth plaque.
I want you to have a plaque.
So the Portsmouth certificate reads, "The Portsmouth School Committee and Administration Certificate of Appreciation, presented proudly to Dr. Thomas Kenworthy, with sincere appreciation for your dedicated service to the Portsmouth School Department. Thank you for your commitment to excellence, collaborative spirit, and unwavering focus on student success." And so if you would please join me and the other school committee members up front, we will present you with the certificate, and we have a plan for your new office. Don't kill me.
Not headland.
We'll be on each side of the here. Everybody over here. Nice picture. Get the plan. One more. Thank you. You got it, Jackson? Come on out. He staged, he could have been part of the Portsmouth High School football team.
Jackson, what'd you think of the Red Sox game?
I loved it.
Well, now turn it over to Dr. Kenworthy for a few remarks. Thank you.
Now I have to see if I can get through these. Well, thank you. That was very kind. I'm grateful for the opportunity afforded to me by the Portsmouth School Committee back in December of 2019. Thank you to Dr. Copeland, Mr. Ferber, Ms. McDade, who are on that committee, and Ms. K, excuse me, Mrs. Kelly, Mrs. Keen, Mr. Delahanty, and Mr. Fox, who have been great additions as well. You're an outstanding school committee to work with. You are all in this for the right reasons, and you deeply care about the students, staff, and families of Portsmouth. Working with all of you has been easy for me as superintendent, and that goes for all members who have served during my time since 2019, Mr. Payero and Mrs. Flank, who are now on the town council, as well as Ms. Kate Holtman, Mr. Tom Badnay, and the late Mr. Alan Shears. Thank you to all of them as well. I want to thank my family for coming out tonight, my wife Elizabeth, my children, Tamsin and Jackson are here, the main reasons that I've been drawn to the superintendent position in East Greenwich. My daughter Victoria is online watching remotely from Boston, where she is now working. And their love and support has enabled me to give my all to this job in this district. Thank you. Thank you to the leaders and officials from the town who have served during my time as superintendent. We have all worked together for the benefit of the district and the residents of Portsmouth. And a special thank you to our town administrator, Mr. Rich Reiner, who I have enjoyed a close working relationship with. Thank you to all of the families of Portsmouth, the students, former students, and parents. They are the bedrock of this community and what makes it so special. And thank you to the outstanding staff we have in place, from teachers to paraprofessionals to clerks and custodians, and everyone in between. You're all amazing professionals, and I was very proud every day to work with you. I will miss you all. And a special thank you to the outstanding leadership team, which we've, we've already heard a lot about, and rightly so, many of whom are here this evening. You have made my job so much easier, Superintendent, and I know this district will be in very good hands with all of you in place. I wish I had the time to thank all of you individually, but I know we have other important things to get to. However, there are three individuals that I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to thank further. The first, who also could not be here this evening, Mr. Chris Duro. We know him as an outstanding school district finance director, but what many may not realize is that Mr. Duro was also part of the initial screening and interview committee when I first applied to be superintendent back in 2014. And the story, as I am told, is that the group had settled on a pool of candidates to interview who all had central office experience, and that's what they left me as their marker for that group. And although I did not know him at the time, Mr. Duro, I am told, pushed very hard for me to be included in that pool, even though I did not have central office experience. So I guess you could say, from there, the rest is history. Thank you, Chris. Hello. John Donnie. Not gonna be able to say it many more times. There is nothing I could say that could capture what you have meant to me.
You inherited me.
You've been by my side since day one. You've known what I've need, needed oftentimes before I have, and you have always had my back. It's something I've never doubted for one moment, and a blessing that I've never taken for granted. Thank you. And last but not least, to Dr. Viveras.
He should have run tissues.
By far the easiest hiring I've ever made. You've been an outstanding partner to me. Your work ethic is matched only by your drive and dedication to what is in the best interest of students. I will miss our morning calls, however, there is about a five-minute window that allows me to catch me. You've been instrumental in every success we have had for the past five years. Thank you. That's it.
We actually haven't voted yet.
I practiced that several times.
I did too. I read you twice.
I'm gonna read yours, too.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded to accept the resignation of the superintendent and waive the 90-day notice. We are accepting with regret, grateful that you gave us till August 11th. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous with regret. Thank you very much. Okay.
I move for discussion and action on the appointment of a superintendent.
Second.
Oh, Elizabeth Viveras.
I just leave it hanging there.
Okay. Motion, motion for discussion and action to appoint Dr. Elizabeth.
Right, that's right.
Second for discussion? All right. So, Dr. Viveras has in her contract the opportunity to have an initial discussion with the school committee, should the vacancy of superintendent arise, which it obviously just did. Prior to this meeting, we had a discussion with Dr. Viveras in executive session, and I would like to open the floor for comments. I have some. I can go ahead, Ms. Kelly.
Well, the first thing that I thought when I saw Tom's text was, thank goodness we have Liz, because I knew that we had somebody good, wonderful in the district that could, could step into his place. I've, you've been the deputy superintendent, I think, the entire time I've been in the school committee. I know you're getting your PhD, and I think that's the only change that happened while, since I was on the committee. And I just, it's been a pleasure working with you for five years on committees and going to conferences, and just the respect that your colleagues and the teachers and the students all have, and just seeing how much you care for the district and, and really just, you know, the, the vision that you have going forward, I'm, I've always been impressed with, and I'm thrilled that you wanted to continue to work in that capacity.
Thank you. I know, I'm not putting people on the spot.
Some of the, the conversations we've had before, but certainly your leadership, you know, to this point, has, has proven yourself as a, as a, you know, an excellent asset to Portsmouth School District. So I couldn't think of a better person to step in Tom's shoes. Thank you.
And I certainly agree with all of that, and I've known you for the, most of the time you've been here. When you were at Melville, I remember you essentially came in second, I think, for the blue ribbon. I mean, you were that close to getting, to getting.
So close.
Yeah, but, but it, but it just demonstrated.
My first thing I do.
You helped develop Danielle, and Danielle ends up getting us a five-star. So I think that's, that's one pretty good illustration of your leadership skills. And, you know, you've just been a fantastic asset to the school department, and I think it's terrific that we're able to retain you, I think. We haven't settled on. But it's, I, I think it's just wonderful that we were able to capitalize on all the experience that you have and, and for, and continue on and maybe excel beyond the accomplishments that. We're in competition. We're in really big competition with East Greenwich.
Only one way to go, don't mess it up.
I'm, I'm just really struck this evening by how fortunate we are in this district. And I think one of the most, people have said it before, but one of the most important things about Dr. Kenworthy's legacy is that he leaves us with this incredible leadership team, and you are the, the shining example of that, the leader of that, the, the innovator, the visionary. I mean, we, I'm so looking forward to seeing where you take our district. So I'm just very happy to be in this position.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with those words. I think you're a thought leader in this field, and you're so curious to always strive for excellence, which is exactly what we need. And you've come in, swooped in at these critical times, and you, your communication skills can just evaporate the conflict and move the boat forward, and it is invaluable for every stakeholder. And I know every single stakeholder feels confident that you're ready to lead this district. I truly feel that way. I have enjoyed working with you on some committees and know that work ethic that Tom referenced is only matched by that, that leadership drive, which is just, I, I can't describe how excited I am for the journey ahead.
Yeah, we're certainly fortunate to have you already in our district. Be able to just continue on the path we're on is gonna be super valuable. And it's very obvious your love for the school district and the kids in it, it's gonna be an attribute that it's gonna serve us well, I think.
No pressure.
I'm feeling it.
And I had to write mine down. So when Dr. Viveras, at that point, Ms. Viver, Mrs. Viveras came to the, came to Portsmouth in 2012 as the new principal of Melville Elementary School, she served in that role for eight years, improving academic performance significantly, closing special education gaps, transforming part of the ground into the first outdoor learning classroom that Portsmouth has, the Melville Outdoor Classroom. And in 2019, 2020, she was also our district's MTSS coordinator. She trained staff, she built instructional capacity and social learning, social emotional learning systems. And in 2020, she was then appointed by Dr. Kenworthy as deputy superintendent. And over the next five years, she has really been spearheading our efforts of academic innovation and improvement. And while it is always a team effort, her leadership has been an important reason why Portsmouth now has four four-star schools and one five-star schools, I think, instead of three and four-star schools. Again, not taking anything away from the building administrators, teachers, et cetera, but I think you need that consistent pushing vision. It's really wonderful. The other thing is, I think it's just marvelous, kind of the support that she has among the district leadership team. As one member of the team mentioned in a letter of support the committee received for Dr. Viveras, "Her influence on the Portsmouth School District has been both transformative and far-reaching. She has raised expectations for instructional leadership, fostered a commitment to data-informed decision-making, and prioritized inclusive, student-centered practices at every level. She has built systems that support continuous improvement while also nurturing a culture of trust, collaboration, and shared responsibility. Under her leadership, the Portsmouth School District has not only improved outcomes for students, but has also become a place where educators feel empowered and supported." Very high praise. Dr. Viveras has paid, played a major role in expanding our CTE offerings, and with her seemingly boundless energy and appetite for work, she has been instrumental in writing and supporting grant applications that have brought in between $5 and $6 million to the district. This started with the Melville Outdoor Classroom, and most recently has resulted in a $500,000 biotech grant application and stage two approval for one of our new CTE programs here at Portsmouth. Her skill and expertise has been recognized by other districts as she has been approached to apply for other positions, and I personally appreciate her loyalty and dedication to this district. She has served for 13 years. You might say. You might say that Dr. Viveras has undergone one of the longest job interviews as we are exceptionally familiar with her focus on innovation, her clear and direct communication skills, as mentioned already, her academic leadership, her track record of supporting student growth while maintaining a warm and welcoming approach for students, staff, and families. With the school year starting in what, six short weeks, I think it is, I hate to mention that, July. I do not believe that even if we had spent thousands of dollars and an unknown amount of time on a national search, that the outcome of our search would have been any different. I truly feel we have the best candidate to lead the Portsmouth School District. To have done twice this meeting, sitting right here in front of us. And I, without any reservation, support her nomination as new superintendent for this Portsmouth School District. All in favor of appointing Dr. Viveras as the new Portsmouth School Superintendent? Raise your hand. Any opposed unanimous seven zero. Now. Will you give a photo first or say a few words?
I'll say a few words. I'm sure. Just because I feel like I've been choked up now for the last fifteen minutes. Yeah, I, I just want to say that I'm incredibly grateful for this opportunity and for all of your trust. Portsmouth has truly shaped me as a leader. It's been a privilege to grow within this district and to work alongside so many passionate and dedicated professionals. I care deeply about our students, our staff, and our families, and I believe in the power of this community. I am fully committed to continuing our journey towards excellence and am honored to serve as your next superintendent. I want to sincerely thank the school committee for their confidence in me, my colleagues for their ongoing encouragement and partnership, and my family who's here with me tonight for their unwavering support every step of the way. I couldn't have done this without you. So thank you all.
Now we didn't get you a plant. We truly, really would be remiss without thanking Tom's family who's back there, right? Hi, raise your hand. Really, thank you for sharing. His family's right here, her husband, son, and daughter. Yep, we really appreciate it. All right. Uh, we do have one more item. Fred?
I move for discussion and action on the contract for our superintendent. What's her name?
Any discussion? All in favor? So any opposed? Approved seven zero. Thank you. Dr. Kenworthy's last day in the district is August 11th. And as of August 12th, Dr. Viveras will be our new superintendent. So we'd like to welcome you in advance.
Thanks very much.
Before we start bombarding with you. Before we close the meeting, I would like to note that our, our, um, August meeting is August 26th, probably at Tom Hall, but we'll see if anything comes up. But thank you so much for coming and helping with a sad eye and a happy smile, uh, attend the meeting with us. So can I have a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, okay. Motion for adjournment.